Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the study session of the Dearborn Heights City Council. I'd like to welcome Lieutenant Paulus and Patrol Union President Sneers for a study session about the employee tuition reimbursement. And we do have the HR director as well. And Mr. Farina, sir, whenever you're ready, we're all ears. You have any presentation for us or just maybe go through the contract? What does it say exactly?
Yeah, I could go.
So everybody can hear it.
Yeah, I'll go through the contract here, just so you guys are aware of what the contract language states. And then we also have an arbitration ruling from 2015 that states something to the effect of what we're talking about here today. And I also have some documents from Officer Barrow for what his education is from. So the contract states, Article 57 in the CBA for the DHPOA, Section 1, Subsection A, Number 1, states, "The courses taken must relate directly to police work or be part of a recognized police administration degree curriculum." It's really the only part in this section that pertains to this and what we're talking about today. I know there were statements about what Officer Barrow's actual course of study is. I do have a document here that his major is in psychology from Wayne State University. That's what his degree is in. So it's for psychology. I believe what you guys have for what was on the agenda are the classes listed here, which a good majority of them are actually the subject classification is for psychology. There are some that there is one class that is for NFS, which I believe is something to do with nutrition, food services. And the class is human nutrition micronutrients. The arbitration ruling from 2015 revolved around Officer Ed Peela, where he went for curriculum that was then questioned and went in front of an arbitration after a grievance. And this is just some of the arbitrator's statements in his narrative. This were his findings for his ruling. "The department places a high degree of importance upon furthering the training and education of its officers in order to have them carry out their responsibilities. The past history of such is such that the grievant, having been reimbursed on prior occasions, had no reason to believe that he would not be similarly reimbursed for the courses taken at Spring Arbor College. In addition, I would be remiss if not in not taking judicial notice of the increased emphasis across the country for police officer training of all kinds. As police work becomes more complicated due to technology and societal reasons, the demand for well-trained officers with diverse disciplines is a prudent use of department educational reimbursement funds. Obtaining a four-year degree regardless of the field of discipline should be of benefit to any police department in the community served." It is a union's perspective, and I'll let Lieutenant Paulus talk as to the supervisors' union as well, that any form of furthering of education is a benefit. But specifically in this time, in this day and age in which we work, psychology is definitely a benefit to not only the officers, but in the community that we serve as well. So the union does feel that this is something that should be covered under our contract.
So let me ask you, that psychology degree, how is going to benefit his police work? And does that do anything like in his ranking or does it just for him to do a better job? That's what you're saying?
Yes, so like, as we were talking about before we began, even today, we had a run in the lobby of the station regarding someone with a mental crisis that they were going through. So our officers deal with psychological issues daily. It's multiple runs a day. I wish I could give you a precise percentage, but multiple runs every day regarding people with mental health issues and that are in crisis. Psychology courses absolutely would benefit it. Furthermore, the command union's perspective is that undergrad courses themselves are more than just the subject matter. Every undergrad course teaches the student to write, to communicate, to engage, to get different perspectives. That alone is where the experience and the course will have fundamental influence on our officers as they perform their duties out on the road, if that makes sense.
No, definitely. I mean, any education in any form, I think, would benefit anybody. I think we're here to discuss basically the contract because I know you mentioned the arbitration case from 2015, but I'm not sure if.
Yeah.
So far now.
Yeah, yes, also, Chair Protem.
I'm sorry, we like, we have to study this case like Mr. Barrow, but this is for everybody, not just Mr. Barrow.
Absolutely.
Any case comes for, I'm sorry, Mr. Farina, go ahead.
No, I would add in a memorandum to Mayor Ruth Canfield, Controller at the time Donald Barrow, HR Director Chris Sullivan dated September 12, 2001, Kurt El Heisy presented the, quote, "Tuition Assistance Policy for Dearborn Heights, AFSCME Local 290 and Non-Union Employees effective July 1, 2001." The memorandum referenced the collective bargaining agreement 2000 to 2003 between the City of Dearborn Heights and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 290 for a tuition reimbursement benefit. The city council motion 01-219 also extended the terms to non-union employees. The management position of Mayor Canfield and the City of Dearborn Heights was, quote, "Recognized that employees who volunteered to improve their education lead to better trained and educated employees, which in turn allows the city to provide and maintain, as they're talking today, standards for the residents accordingly." The policy was intended to encourage and assist employees who seek to improve, quote, "Their job-related skills and education for the betterment of the City of Dearborn Heights." So I'm saying that in conjunction as the, in 2015, but also going down to originally what Ruth Canfield and Mayor did in 2000, 2001, all the unions, the collective bargaining agreement came together to support our employees stepping forward and taking extra steps to better their education.
Council members, anybody has any questions?
So, I do. So what's the, we had the study session because of some, some kind of disconnect, overpaying the tuition, correct?
I believe that there were, there was talks of that, of what the course of study was that this officer was actually taking. And if it pertained to police-related matters, is what the contract states it has to. I reached out to the officer. The officer provided me immediately with a screenshot directly from Wayne State University of what his curriculum is and the course of study and what his major is. And the major is psychology. And he is an undergraduate and he just, I believe he just graduated as with his four-year bachelor's degree in psychology.
Okay, so because we have paid his tuition before and I asked for the same information, the same exact information was provided.
I think some of the concern that grew that brought us to this study session was the rumors that the courses he was taking were for a pharmaceutical degree, like graduate level pharmaceutical degree. And at that point, I think the city or the administration might be able to say that doesn't apply to the contract. But not.
But I believe he's within his rights of our contract to have his tuition paid.
We would agree as well, yes.
Sounds good.
Any more from council members? I think, I'm not talking about the Bureau case here. I'm talking, I think, whatever it's in the contract, it's like a broad definition, like anything that relates to the police work. I mean, besides psychology, like where, if I go for biology, for example, does that relate to police work for undergrad?
Well, you're gonna have two very different answers from this side right here, right?
Say something different. So I don't know if maybe the HR director or anybody from administration can help us maybe define that in the contract. I'm not sure if this has to go back to negotiation, Mr. Farina?
Well, yeah, I think, but I think they've given it, I think, yes.
Just defining, like defining exactly what relates to police work. Or I'm not sure if anybody else has it too, like Fire Department has it too?
Fire Department, all the whole city, all the employees, they just have to show how it betters them as employees to the city, how they contribute back. Remember with the, they pay it first, is that right?
Right.
And then we reimburse them afterwards. But they, if they quit or leave, they don't get the money back. So it's got to be for pure timing. They can help as employees for the city. We just had a situation, we were talking about this for this morning, a resident that was out of control. I mean, I'd say, you know, Captain Paulus talked her down from jumping off the rail a few months ago, the second floor rail. But the use of psychology is essential in police work. I've been a prosecutor at Wayne County Attorney General's Office. I've worked, the level of psychology and the need for it is tremendous in the field.
So that's what I'm saying, like if somebody from clerk's office or the treasurer's office decide to go to a biology major, how is that going to benefit the city? Are we supposed to pay for that? I think we need some kind of more defined
We can.
Definition for like courses or degrees that relates to city benefit. That's my opinion. I'm not sure if this can be done or do you have anything to say about it? Please go ahead.
And if I could also interject, like some biology courses and or science-related courses are going to be part of a forensic.
No, I'm talking like a budget degree.
Right, so, yes.
Like undergrad degree now, just a course.
Yes, when I was studying this, and I think it came up maybe a couple of months ago and I had to.
I'm sorry, just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Dewan Fisher, I'm the HR director.
Thank you, sir.
When I was taking a look at the different contracts, there is a few things that I noticed that the contracts were kind of vague. And so I made certain recommendations. Unfortunately, I can't make any alterations because we are not in contract negotiation for some of the collective bargaining units. But there are some things that we want to put in place. And I don't want, my suggestion is to make sure that those courses are approved before bringing it to council's attention. And so whatever the courses may be, the director will actually make sure that it aligns with everything. In addition to that, make sure that it's budgeted for because the financial situation of the city can fluctuate. And so we don't want to run into problems. And then there's also certain contracts where there's no limit to it, no gap to it. So someone can come with a $20,000 bill and based on the contract, we'll have to abide by that. And so putting a limit to even that because it's a financial burden. And we don't want to hinder our employees for furthering education, but there are certain gaps that I want to close up and tighten up. That way we won't have future problems like this.
So this is probably, this is you're talking, we go back to negotiation.
Correct.
Right now, there's nothing we can.
Nothing we can do.
How can we, right now, what, whatever's in the contract, how can we define those courses and make sure, you know, they relate to police work or firework or any city work?
So what we can do is take a look at the curriculum that they are studying. And so if it is psychology, and I do believe that psychology can be used in police work, not against it. But if it's, I don't know, higher education, I don't think that will relate to police work. And so we can come up with a category based upon the job field, the job field and their job title and say, hey, these courses or these degrees would apply that you can utilize in your field. And that way we would be in compliance with the first clause of it, of the contract.
I think, right now, the policy has to be approved by a director first, the director of that employee, correct? And that director was the first level to check and see if it relates or is something that's going to benefit the department.
So now in the police department, that would be the chief or?
I think it would be the chief.
The chief approves them first before he is.
That's correct.
Is there anywhere we could do it where every director approves it plus the HR director somehow?
I'll look back over because we have a written policy on it. I'll relook at the policy and see.
So the policy can be changed, all right, correct?
Yes, yes, policies can be changed.
Is that something you think you can help us with? Like, at least we'll have two people instead of just one. Maybe we can have the director of the department and plus you approve those courses before. Don't they have to be assigned, approved by the mayor too? I thought the mayor approves them too.
The directors approve it.
The director approves them? Then the mayor says yes.
Yeah, so there's the two, the director and the mayor that approve it, right? I mean, I thought the administration.
Sorry, Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff. The mayor's authority is over the directors themselves. So if a director is to take a course, that's where he would be the person responsible for authorizing that course, being relevant for that particular.
Employee that their directors approve what they're doing first, right?
So the directors do approve the employees directly. So in the union cases or non-union employees, their director would be the one responsible for approval. There is a second level of approval, which is when it goes into claims, which is where the controller takes a look at what the courses are, that they get the A or B plus, depending on which contract it is. Is there authorized? If the controller then approves it, it goes for final signature for the mayor to approve it and then to the council body. So really, there are three levels.
But the first step is the one we're discussing here, which is making sure before they register, before they take those courses.
They have to be approved by the director.
The director, and I don't know, this is my opinion. I don't know if somebody else has something else. I'm hoping maybe the HR director can have maybe a say in it too.
I don't have any issue with assisting the director and making sure that it aligns, that way we won't have any issues down the line. So I'm good with that.
However.
You guys think about that, is something to have like two people approve it instead of one?
That would have to be negotiated, but yeah.
I think he just said this, just on the policy, is it?
So as far as who approves this, there's nothing in our contract that states who approves it, right? Ninety, 99% of this contract, it is the chief of police or his designee.
Okay.
Right? So if the chief decides to have, you know, Acting Captain Paulus approve all educational expenses and the courses related to them, we don't have a say in that. Our say is if the administration or the city says that they can't, they're not going to pay for something that we believe is something related to police, then we follow the grievance procedure to arbitration, just as how this was happened, right, or how that happened. So as far as who approves it, that's completely up to the administration themselves.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Mariana and or HR director?
Sorry.
What do you think, how much money are we talking about? We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money. Are we less, it's probably less than $75,000 a year?
Oh, absolutely. I think every semester is around $7,000 to $15,000.
Maybe even less than.
Again, 9,100. Again, the most I've ever seen is like $12,000.
This is one person, councilman, so if a lot of people decide at the same time, that's a significant amount of money too.
Well, and it's, but yeah, I mean, it's good to have a trained workforce and hire from within. But we're not talking, we're probably talking about an amount less than $20,000 per year, correct?
It depends on the department. Some departments have more employees that are enrolled. We could take a look at that and give you a breakdown of how much they've spent over the past three years, if you would like to see the tuition reimbursement for each department. But I don't believe anybody is above $50,000 per department, per se. Like, I would say fire and police are the highest ones because they have such a high demand for training. But other than that, the other departments don't even reach.
This is different than training. This is going to school.
I know, tuition reimbursement, but they have more staff as well. They have double what many other departments have.
I mean, we were just trying to start a process. First, we need to make sure we're budgeted for, councilman, because like right now, we do have the police explorers and I'm hoping we're going to have a lot of property. They're going to turn to police officers too. So most likely, they're going to go to school too. So we have to be ready for them too. So.
We could also assess, like, how many of our guys already have degrees and see the potential for, okay, if all of a sudden everybody without a degree wanted to go in, what would be the exposure to the city if, all right?
Not just talking to police department here, we're talking across the city. So I know it happened, like we're studying your case, but we're talking abroad, all city departments, because I think we need to have some kind of policy, like I said, maybe two directors approve it before, just to make sure, you know, first, you know, it's within the contract. Second, that the city have the money to pay for it.
Yeah, for sure.
So I don't know, do you guys have any more comments or suggestion?
I mean, I remember one year that there was a police officer who was studying to be a police chaplain.
That was.
Yeah, that's this arbitration ruling. The, one of the former council members made a big issue. What was the result of the arbitration?
It was ruled in favor of the grievance. So it was, it was, it was ruled for the city to pay it. And yeah, the actual award says the grievance is granted and the grievance is to be reimbursed as indicated above. Arbitrator retains jurisdiction for 45 days. And he goes into his analysis and opinion through it, but.
Did that officer end up getting his degree and staying with the city?
He did. He retired through the city of Dearborn Heights, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
So councilman, before you walked in, we're discussing the contract has a vague description of they have to take a related course for the police work. So like, everybody can say something different. You can say, like, you know, you cannot take biology. I can say, yeah, they can help them with the police work. So we're trying to maybe some, right now, we cannot, there's nothing we could do with the contract, but we're trying to, you know, maybe change the policy, have two people approve it versus one director approve the courses before. Yeah, so should, any more comments from president or lieutenant? You're acting captain now? I said lieutenant.
I think I'm still lieutenant.
You're still lieutenant? Okay, I don't want to like must stay rank.
Thank you though.
Should we, Mariana, do you have something to say? Go ahead, please.
Sorry, I just quickly pulled the numbers from police specifically. So the highest we've had was 23, 24, where they spent $39,321. 24, 25, they spent $15,000. 25, 26, they're budgeted for $25,000. But this is the first invoice we've seen so far.
So my question is, I don't know if Maddy can help, if we budgeted for something a year, can we go over that budget? Because we have in the contract or can we just put a limit, whoever comes, comes for, you know, apply first, you know, gets the money?
So ideally, the chief would know when he's building the budget, who's enrolled in school and how much each course is going to cost per semester, right?
Basically, the chief can say no.
The chief could say no if he chooses to follow the, if he would like to offer it to more employees or if he finds out that somebody else is taking something for whatever reason, he can come to the council and request a budget amendment. And then it's up to you to decide if you want to agree.
That contract, the chief can say no for somebody not to, like if they want to apply.
For the contract, he can't say no. But again, he can come to the council to, to say yes. But again, like he would know before they enroll, what they're enrolling in. That's typically how it works.
Okay, how about if whoever is interested, they can submit something before even the budget hearings? So at least we can put it in the budget. That's something we can do, like, this is part of the negotiation too? I think that would be the best thing. Whoever needs to apply, they have to have a term limit. Like you need to let us know before the budget hearings, once a budget hearing is, so at least we can know exactly what to budget for.
Yes, again, in practice, we can start practicing all of these things and hope that the union employees are collaborative and help us with it. But we can't necessarily create a policy for it and include it in their union contract until negotiations open again. But again, the practice has historically been there. It's just a matter of if you want to see it in writing clearly, like you're requesting in the agreement, because it's a little bit vague, we would have to make sure that we're in agreement or do a TA or something with the union.
Well, probably, I would have a request, maybe every director and the chief and the chief of the fire department, maybe they can send all the employees, whoever is thinking about, you know, enrolling in classes or education to at least, you know, give them a deadline before the hearing of the budget, so we can at least budget for it. Because we don't want to not budget for and everybody's going to school at the same time.
Yes. Again, that's typically the case. The only situations where we found that it's unbudgeted is if somebody got employed after the budget had already begun. So that's the cases when we might not know.
Okay. Yes, sir, go ahead, councilman.
Two, two quick questions and officers or Mariana, maybe, you know, what do other cities do like Dearborn? I believe Dearborn reimburses their employees, don't they?
Yes, actually, Dearborn is reimbursing quite heavily and for various degrees. I believe they had their first police officer that got reimbursed for a medical degree, actually, which was unusual for a police department.
It was a dispatcher.
It was, yeah, it was somebody. So, so, so every organization offers it. Some organizations may have clauses where they have to be employed for the following two to three years. Some of them have a cap like the directors do, which is no more than $10,000 per year. So again, we can look into all of those. As Mr. Fisher said, he has already recommended quite a few things and I believe he shared them with some of the council members already, which we will consider as we move forward with negotiations to try to, again, bring some stability to the budget and to.
I mean, by all means, I'm all about education. If we have the money, I mean, by all means, we'll pay for everyone, but we just need to, you know, set the budget ahead of time so we know exactly what, what are we doing? Any more comments from council members before we go to Zoom? Madam, anybody has a question?
Council Protem, if I may, and I completely understand the budgetary concerns that the city's facing right now. I would just, just caution you to, if, if the plan is to limit or anything, I mean, we have had many officers. As example, as my counterpart here has made his education and explored his education to the highest level he can and he is where he sits now in the administrative area. So it is a benefit to the city. It's a benefit to the community. So I would just, you know, caution you on whatever is.
Not here, limit, I'm saying we need to plan ahead and budget for it. That's all I'm saying. I mean, if, if we're looking to spend $100,000 a year, I need to budget for it ahead of time. Sorry.
And I agree with you, Councilman. If I take my union hat off and I put my administrator cap on, I have several ideas too to address these kind of issues and create which are more distinguished for future employees that will pursue their degree.
Council Chair Protem.
This, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, and I, I worked as a court officer in Livonia when I was working my way through law school years ago. It's good for the officers to have something like that. The things, especially the Livonia police officers can get into with too much, and they had days, afternoons and midnights. There were some unbelievable bad problems. So I think it's a good, used good direction for.
So, Councilor Chair, welcome to the meeting. We're just.
I didn't mean to convince.
I'm late. No, no, you're fine. So we were going over the contract. President Sneer was kind enough to go over it that, especially with the Bureau case, he was taking courses in psychology and he's showing us that it does benefit the police work that he's going for. I did suggest to the administration that at least every director, instead of having like one director approve the courses ahead of time, at least they can run it by the HR director as well. And another thing is like if they can send all the employees before the budget hearings, like who's thinking about enrolling in classes, to let, to let them know, at least we can budget for it in that budget here, because like last year, we budgeted $25,000 for the police department and they spent about $39,000.
So can I ask a quick question? Did this major that he's studying, do we have a breakdown of what his major is? Not what classes he's taken, but major?
We do, sir, yeah. His major is psychology.
Okay. I mean, if it falls, I mean, I don't see why that wouldn't be able to be beneficial to the officer. So I think unless you feel that it doesn't otherwise, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to support this.
No, 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 this is, we're just, we're just studying the Bureau case because it came in front of us last week. But this is like, like I said, it's really vague in the contract. So I tried to see if we can define it more. Now they're saying, because it has to go back to negotiation and probably they can define it better in negotiation.
Yeah, I think, you know, one, I think there needs to be some rules and regulation, kind of like we did with our former controller.
Change the policy.
Where the policy needs to be, if you want to take a class, get it written, you know, let it, let us know beforehand and then let it get approved by council, then you can go ahead and take the classes. But I think where somebody just takes the classes and we're like, here, here's the receipt and everybody's being blindsided. I mean, look, we want to be able to help out and give people the right education that they deserve and that they need. Ultimately, the right thing to do here also is we need to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward and we're protecting as the fiduciaries of the city. Because at the end of the day, we know that $20,000 can, can go a long way right now when it comes to our overtime, especially hearing that our chief of staff has told us that the police department is ready at 40% overtime. I mean, I don't know who to blame.
I mean, I don't know who to blame. I can blame the police chief, I can blame the police officers, I can blame the administration. Ultimately, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna tilt my hand over to the administration. And if, 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 and the reality is, if you have forty percent or two months in. What in the world are we gonna do when it comes to next, you know, it comes to springtime? What are you gonna do in March? What are you gonna do in April? What are you gonna do in June? Tell people, hey, you know what? We can't afford any police officers. We no longer have any money in the budget. Are we gonna come back and search and say, oh my God, let's try to find some ways to squeeze money? We've done that already. You guys gotta do a better job at that as well, especially when we're looking and saying, and again. I'm not saying if we pay for your schooling, we're not gonna be able to pay for your overtime. What we're gonna say is, we can't afford. You know, and then what's ends up happening in situations that people get laid off and people don't want to work for the department. So we really need to figure something out.
Council chair.
Maybe this isn't a conversation to you guys. This is more of a conversation to the administration.
You know, I have a question, like every department, maybe Matty can help. Do they, every director in every department, like the chief or any director in any department, do they sit down with you just to go over their budget? You know, maybe. Yeah, like, I know we send monthly report, but do we even discuss it?
So Mari has never been in at the budget hearings, planning. I know that he's presented the budget twice, but he hasn't actually met with the directors. But yes, the directors during the budget process meet for about two months. With the controller, the mayor and myself typically, sometimes H R, depending on their hiring needs. Um and that's how the budget is typically built.
After the budget, like right now.
After the budget, we do send uh the budget to actuals and if there's anything that's highlighted, we immediately bring it up to the attention of the. Directors and we have a conversation about how it's going to get resolved.
You know, you know what's crazy? We're in twenty-twenty-five, going into twenty-twenty-six, the year of artificial intelligence. I, I can assure you guys right now, there's some type of A I program that tells every director or police chief or fire chief. These are the amount of officers, this is how much money that you have in your budget, this is how much money is going into overtime and it will flag how much you're using. And what's estimated and by the time, you know, by the month, about when it should be gone. Uh I can't believe we don't have anything, because like what's happening is the police chief don't know. Uh nobody's getting, and, and I, I know, man, you're gonna tell me there's an Excel sheet, I'm sure. Yes, you could do that in an Excel. What I'm saying is, but it can be something as simple as putting in some numbers and it can give you a quick breakdown. So now they know, can say, okay. We need to figure this out.
It, it's not an Excel sheet. It's actually B S N A itself. That's where the budget amendment sheets come from. It calculates everything for you and gives you the percentage.
Taking advantage of it?
We send it every month. And again, when there is something that they should be paying attention to, we question them on it. Sometimes it's an error and it gets corrected. Uh sometimes they're just over and then they have to come up with ways to correct the situation. Uh but yeah, B S N A already has those tools. That's how we pull that information for the entire budget.
Well, I, I'll tell you right now, in Westland, Kevin Coleman has this uh A I program. And every director uses it every single day. There's so many officers they have, so many firefighters they have, so many warrant officers they have, so many part-time employees they have. And it gives you a breakdown of where your budget is, what you're expected to use, this is how you structure it. And if we have to restructure, we have to restructure. But what we can't just come around and say, well. Hey, the police department's ready to use forty percent of the, the overtime budget and uh. Yeah, we, we have no money, so, okay, what's, what's, what's your guys' solution? We're not managing the city. Mariana, you and the mayor and Roger are. So I mean, we, we need to figure something out. I know I brought something to you guys last weekend. You, you brought this to our attention.
I am aware and we're negotiating it. As I mentioned already, we're talking to the chief about possible solutions. But it isn't as simple as, you know, a one-day conversation. So we're still looking into it.
I, I can tell you a pretty good solution. You want me to give it to you?
No, thank you, but you can send that email to the chief.
Helping the city, you don't want to hear it? I'll tell you either way, hire more officers, Mariana. Yeah, hire more officers. That's it.
Again, that is part of the conversation already. It's not as simple as just hiring more officers who are in the process, as I mentioned at the last meeting as well.
Hire more officers.
We have rules to follow to hire more officers. We're hiring as many as we can. I don't know how many we have down the pipeline, but. Five, I think.
We, we currently have uh five in process to run through background check. Um I don't know who. The previous predecessors of H R was, but there is a rule, all right, for hour and wages. That we can institute that I shared this information with the chief that we're trying to incorporate. For um, what do you call it? Um. Essential workers, police and fire, as far as hour and wages go, for eighty-four hours, there is standard time. But currently, the way the contract is written, after four hours of overtime, we're paying for four hours of overtime when, and when essentially. The eighty-four hours is a rule that it's been approved by the government and by the R S that we don't utilize. So those four hours, we can get back and not utilize it as overtime. And so that's one of the things that I'm trying to incorporate, but that's going to take contract negotiation and things of that nature.
Eighty, eighty-four hours per every two week, eighty-four.
Every two weeks. So right now, it's, you know, you work forty hours, forty hours. When you work an extra four hours, you get overtime, all right? So there is a rule. Um it's eighty-four hours of standard time for police and fire. That would save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars if we get those four hours back. Because it's a federal law through the hour and wages. So it's not just Michigan, but it's a federal law. So we can incorporate that to cut down on the cost of overtime.
Thank you, council chair. And look, we're not here in negotiation. The last time we talked like this, Mariana and the mayor told us, you guys can go to jail, so we don't want to go to jail.
We're not negotiating, we're just trying to understand the federal law.
I know, but the issue is, uh with all due respect to Mr. Dejean, yeah. Anytime we had these type of conversations, Roger, the mayor, Mariana told us, you're not allowed to. We're not negotiating, but yeah. You can, you can email us over that law, that federal law. Thank you.
Council chair, I just wanted to circle back and clarify uh council pro tem's um concerns. So the contract does currently state that you must, that, that, that any courses must relate directly to police work. Or be part of a recognized police administration degree curriculum. The. It's, it falls solely on the chief of police to determine whether or not, currently, whether or not he believes that these courses are. In relation to what the contract states. He has the ability to say yes or no to those things as well. And we then, if we don't agree, then we just fall back on the grievance procedure. So there are still some safeguards for you guys there still. Um the chief can say, I mean, if, if somebody goes and wants to go for a degree in frisbee throwing, he can say, no, that's not police-related. I'm not paying for it. Right? So there are still some safeguards with that in there. I know you want it more clear and I understand that as well, but just so you're aware, there are still. Some safeguards that lie with the chief of police.
President Steve, it's not, uh like I said, it's not just about the police department. I'm trying, do we have a different, like, are they the same contract for all the, the different? Look, I mean, I'm talking about just the uh item, like about the courses. If they are, do they relate to the, like I said, maybe Miss George wants to go for a biology degree. Can she go for a biology degree and we pay for it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Each union has a different um clause in their union contract for tuition reimbursement. They have slightly different language in it. But every employee in the city is eligible for tuition reimbursement, including the directors, as Mr. Ferreira said earlier. That has been in place since Ruth Camfield's time in the city.
Okay, so only just the police department has to relate to police work then?
Correct. And again, every department has it kind of relevant to their area of expertise. So again, you're not gonna have a D P W employee studying finance, but they might be studying something with engineering or something like that. Yeah.
Any other question?
Um no, nothing, council chair. Now question, my suggestion was maybe if we can change the policy, not the contract. And maybe have the director of each, if, each department approve along with the second approval by the H R director.
I, I think that also goes back to negotiation.
That's the thing, like, there's no separate policy. There, the policy is the contract. So in practice, we can implement the things that you're recommending, like we already have. But the policy is the union contract. That is what we follow by, that it's what grievances come from.
No, I understand that, for example, before the chief says yes, he can just give him a call.
In practice, correct, but it wouldn't be a written agreement.
You could technically have a written policy that if you do want to follow the contract by saying, getting these classes approved. This is the policy you have to follow first. Based on the contract, you can go ahead and move.
As long as it doesn't contradict the union contract, yes, a hundred percent.
But, but I, I get what, I think what the councilman was saying, can we create a policy? But I want you to know that goes back to negotiating.
So it has nothing to do with negotiating, it's a policy between, between the mayor office and every director. Has nothing to do with the negotiation.
You, you know, you know what we need in our city? We need a matrix. Like these are, these are the rules and under these certain guidelines, this is how you operate. We don't have any type of matrix. And it drives me crazy that we're just, we wing everything, but.
And also, council chair, just a request, like we can request from every director to request from their employees to see if they are going to apply. Or register for courses before uh the budget hearings, so at least we can budget for it. And this is just a request, so we can be ready for it, that's all.
Again, the policy would start from the administration.
So what we can do, and what I've created already, is a formal application that doesn't go against or violate the union contract. But it is a formal uh application letting all parties know that this person plans on taking these courses. And so that kind of gives us a idea without violating the contract, but also I can share it. Well, once it's implemented, I can share it, you know, with the council, with Mari, our, our finance person. That way we have a idea of what it could potentially cost us. If it doesn't have anything to do with the approval process, it's just an application informing us that this individual plans to take a course. And put the course down, who his director is, and then we retain that information. And at the time, we can share it with the parties to be.
Or maybe every director can bring it to the budget hearing. Yeah, the police chief, if he, you know, he can send it to all the police officers saying, you know, who's interested in, you know, get more education. They tell them maybe ten officers are gonna register for courses, at least he'll have it, and he can bring it to the budget hearings, so we can budget for it. And that goes along for every department. So that's all I'm saying. I'm saying let's just plan ahead. Whoever wants to, you know, go for degrees, I mean, God willing, go for it, but just let us know ahead of time, so we can budget for it. That's all I'm asking for.
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
And just so you guys are aware, the first line of the contract in this section does state, the city of Dearborn Heights, upon written application, will pay for tuition and textbooks for police officers.
Yeah, so.
So the written application is.
Written application, fire tourists?
Are we referencing Officer Barrows? That, I, that would be a question for.
I think what normally happens is the application is the, the request for reimbursement. That's how. That, that's the application process. There's no like pre-class application as of yet.
Yeah. That, that, that's a policy that we can get back with the administration. Thank you.
By, by he's saying that the chief needs to approve the classes before he even register.
No, he doesn't.
That's what he just told me.
No, he doesn't. He's mistaken.
It's the city of Dearborn Heights, upon written application, will pay for tuition and textbooks for police officers. So it doesn't state that the chief has to approve them.
You just said earlier, like, like chief has to approve the courses before.
Ultimately, the chief of, like I said, ninety-nine percent of this contract is, is the chief or his designee. Is, is everything that's stated in this contract. So, yeah, ultimately, the chief of police is, is who would ultimately approve. Yeah, that, that goes towards or deny, and that goes to council for, yeah, we'll submit to it, right? Um so yeah, ultimately, the chief has the say of whether or not it gets submitted to you guys for reimbursement.
Offer reimbursement now, in the beginning, before they take the classes.
There's already a contract. Any other con, any other questions? Okay, yeah, we'll open up to the public. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on the audience? Ladies and gentlemen, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, council chair.